Education on Monday, October tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please rise for the National. Nothing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Firth, for your call, the rule.
Mrs. Porters.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Hamm.
Here.
Mrs. Packard.
Here.
Mr. Trussell.
Here.
Thank you. We would like to first have a moment of silence for Gail Bullock, age sixty-two of Troy. She passed away Sunday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. She served as a teacher at Concord Elementary for thirty-five years. We also have Doyle Holfinger, passed away on October fourth. He began working for Troy City Schools in nineteen eighty-one as a bus driver. In nineteen ninety-seven, he moved into the position of food service delivery slash maintenance, and he retired in December of two thousand and twenty-one after thirty-seven years. Thank you. Next, we will have a couple of presentations. First, we will have here from the Haywood Building.
Would you like to use this? Yeah, she will. I'm Ray Sadler, Principal, Haywood Elementary School. First, I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity for Haywood to share with you this evening some things that we are doing. So I have with me Mrs. Tyler Bunk. She's a third-grade teacher at Haywood School. She's also the chair of our PBIS committee, and she's going to share with you an initiative that we're doing this year called Soft Start for All. So I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Tyler Bunk.
Thank you. I'm really excited to share this with you. A couple of years ago, I noticed that I felt like my students were lacking some regulation skills, and especially after COVID, there were more emotional outbursts and things like that. And so I started thinking about some ways that I could help with that, and this is something that I found. I want you to think about how you like to begin your day, maybe sipping coffee, catching up on the news, listening to a podcast. These things help prepare our brain to wake up and face the day. Now imagine you're a child. How does the morning look for an average child? Think about how my daughter's day starts, and she's only two, but we're usually rushing to get out the door, get dressed, eat breakfast, grab all the things she needs. It's possible that we are behind, and she ends up getting snapped at, or she forgets something, and maybe she hasn't even fully woken up yet. So that's what a lot of kids are looking at when they come to school, and that doesn't even take into account some of the difficult situations that our kids are facing. So how can we help with that? Obviously, our goal is that students come to school and their brains are ready to learn. Unfortunately, this isn't always the case. So how can we help them reach that learning brain? Can we work that out?
Hi, I'm John Richardson Love, Director of Mental Health and Lead Trauma and Resilience Educator here at Childsavers. Want to share with you a way to think about our brains and understand our brains, particularly when they're going through times of stress, and sometimes trauma, too. This comes from Bruce Perry, who's a physician who has written a number of different books, most recently with Oprah Winfrey, the book called What Happened to You? He also created something called the Neurosequential Model of Therapeutics. That sounds pretty fancy. But in the NMT model, he created this idea that helped us understand how our brain functions, brain states. And if we don't understand people's brain state, it's hard to understand how we can interact with them and help them be successful. The first and most basic fundamental brain state that people have is their need to regulate. And our regulating need is regulating our survival response. When someone's not well-regulated in this basic fundamental brain state, they're going to be in their survival response. That might be their fight, their flight, their freeze, that kind of of basic animalistic response to the world around them, because it's focused on survival. And if I don't feel safe, if I'm not well-regulated, then I'm going to have a hard time being successful in doing anything else. Once we help people be well-regulated, we need to help them feel related, to feel connected with the world, with other individuals, so that they don't feel alone in the world. Because when somebody's not related, someone's not connected to other people, oftentimes bad things happen. And then the third brain state, and the highest level of brain state, is reasoning. And that reasoning is our ability to reason, to learn, process, to think, to plan, to operationalize, to regulate and self-regulate, all those kinds of skills that we really need in that reasoning state. And that reasoning brain state is where we want people to be ninety, if not a hundred percent, of their lives. But sometimes they're not. If we understand these brain states, we can understand how we can support them. Because when someone is in this need for regulation, then I'm going to approach that individual with helping them regulate, which might be about play, it might be about movement, it might be about music, it might be about giving them food and rest, it might be about just giving them time to be peaceful, a peaceful, quiet space. And we need to understand that, because if someone's in that need for regulating, then I'm not going to be able to help them and connect with them in a relationship. If they are well-regulated, then I can work on that reasoning brain state. And when we're working in a reasoning brain state, that's what I can use, my body language, my voice tone, my empathy, my compassion, the words that I have, and my relationship in general, to help them understand that they're not alone in the world, to help them feel connected. And it's only after they feel safe and they feel connected that we can be in that highest level of brain state, that learning brain state, that reasoning brain state, so that we can help people to do all those things that they need to do. Once they're there, they're golden, and we want to help keep them there and maintain their presence there. Understanding people's brain states is essential to this interpersonal communication, to helping anyone, whether adult or child, to be successful in the world and to have good positive interventions with them. And remember, behavior communicates the brain state. I hope this helps you understand the people around you that you serve, that you work with, particularly the children in your lives, as we help them walk through those critical moments. And we have the gift of being able to spend time with them and help them be successful. Thanks for listening.
So our goal is to get to that reasoning brain state, and we have to start with regulation. If kids come to school and they're stressed from their morning and they're tired, they're not in the reasoning brain state. So when we're in the regulate brain state, we need to have play, we need to have quiet, safe spaces, we need to have opportunities for them to relate, once they've reached that regulation, to communicate with their peers and have that opportunity so that they can get to the reason brain state. So how do we do that through Soft Start? I'm going to go back to that. I have a couple of videos from my kids here. What is your favorite thing about Soft Start?
Yeah, I get to make my own choices and get to play with my friends.
And what kinds of things do you like to do in Soft Start?
I like to play Legos and I like to talk to them now.
I love it. Okay, Cameron, what is your favorite part about Soft Start?
That you can just chill, whatever, your brain's going to be ready to learn.
Okay, and what is your favorite thing to do during Soft Start?
Drawing.
Drawing? What did you draw today?
I drew the book from Hooked Boys.
Very cool. And how do you think Soft Start helps you get ready for the day?
Because like somehow, so every time I do it, because later in the day, I feel like I'm going to be afraid of the rest of the work.
Okay, awesome. Thanks for sharing. So what does Soft Start look like in my classroom? Harvey Daniels describes a soft start as "not rigid, but gentle, individualized and peaceful beginnings driven by personal choice, not ordained by someone else's agenda or requirements." So for the first, for fifteen minutes of the school day, my students can choose where to work. They can choose to work alone or with others, and they can choose an activity that challenges their mind or an activity that calms them. The choice is theirs. How does Soft Start support the three Rs? It allows them choice, it promotes creativity and critical thinking, it allows for collaboration and builds relationships with peers, it allows the students to leave behind the stress and baggage that they entered the classroom with and pick up a more positive outlook. Harvey Daniels says that a fifteen-minute soft start is an investment in the overall seven-hour outcome. Kids will accomplish more net learning if they start the day in the driver's seat. At Haywood, Soft Start begins the school-wide walk-in talk from eight-thirty to eight-forty-five, and that takes place on our track outside. And they just get the opportunity to talk to their friends out there. And then students enter the classroom, they complete their morning jobs, they turn their folders, make their lunch choice, those things that have to be done. And then in my classroom, they sharpen two pencils and bring them to me. And that gives me an opportunity to check in with them and say, like, how was your night? How was your morning? How are you doing today? And I get to check whether their pencils are sharpened. So I use that check-in system, and that gives me that opportunity to relate with them. And then some teachers use a different check-in system. Some teachers have implemented like a weather-related check-in where they move their name to cloudy or sunny or stormy, depending on how they're feeling that day. And then they make an activity choice. The expectations, rules, choices, and norms are always consistent, and there's no surprises. During this time, after I've checked in with the kids, I just look at who had a rough morning and who needs some extra help making their choice, because sometimes if you've had a really rough morning, you might need some time to yourself, or maybe you need a friend, but no one has joined in the activity that you're doing, so I can make suggestions to help fill those gaps. What are the choices in Soft Start? So these are some of my kids having Soft Start, and I have some pictures here of some kindergartners doing Soft Start as well. I teach third grade, so some older kids and some younger kids. I have pattern block puzzles, word games, magnetic blocks, Legos. This is a kindergarten classroom, so they're making patterns in one picture. And then in the other, they're doing fine motor activities like clothespins and putting beads on wooden rods, balancing puzzles, drawing, letter activities, creative play. And then jigsaw puzzles are some of the ones that I have in my room, but there you could do math games, Makerspace, Geoboard, sport games, STEM challenges, Play-Doh, sensory bins. All of those are great choices for Soft Start. I don't allow my students to access computers during Soft Start. I had allowed that last year, and I felt like it was like a brick wall. Some students would come in and they'd get on the computer, and then they would have a hard time transitioning away, or they were on something that wasn't helping their brain get started and was just causing us to stay exactly where we were when we came in. These are some of the rules and norms that I have in my classroom. Housekeeping first, so they have to do their morning jobs first. I require them to make one choice, especially with younger kids, when they're going from one activity to the next, their brain never gets started on something, and so they never are activating the parts of their brain that are problem-solving. Find a quiet space to work, stick with your choice until cleanup, and do not make materials and get along. And most of the time they get along, great. I also have norms. So I taught this explicitly to my students, and we modeled it, like what kind of conversations to have if you want to join an activity, and then how to react if your activity is full. So I have a person limit, so we don't have twenty people trying to play with one bin of Legos. Only four people can be at Legos, so if it's full, how to say politely that this activity is full. And then how to respond if you want to work alone, but your activity can be a partner activity, because it's always a choice to work alone. Sometimes you need alone time. And then transitioning to learning. In my room, I have a bell. I ring the bell, and immediately my students start cleaning up, and they know they have two minutes to do that. And then if we have an issue that day and we're not cleaned up in time, or they don't want to stop, then we have a conversation afterwards about, well, what are we going to do differently tomorrow to make sure that we get things done on time? But the expectations are the same every time, and like I said, sometimes I have to reteach routines. But if the transition's too hectic, then the benefits could be lost. So during cleanup time, we try to make sure that we're not fighting or talking too loud, because we don't want to lose all of the benefits that we just got from having Soft Start. I have a couple of other videos here. Okay, can you tell me your story about how Soft Start helped you when you were having a hard day?
Yeah. Me and my parents had an argument, and I couldn't sleep, and you told me that I had to get a permit to sit up.
And why did it help to sit out here instead of in the classroom?
Because it helped me calm down and make me stop crying.
Yeah. Did you want to be bothered by other people, or did you want to be by yourself?
I wanted to be by myself.
And then how was your day after that? It was a good day?
Good.
Denver, do you like Soft Start?
Yeah.
What's your favorite thing about it?
My favorite thing about Soft Start is that it holds our brains and it gives you play for about two or three minutes. And the good in that is we, well, you know, warming our brains up to get us ready for a while with anything.
You're right.
Like drawing Legos and other like activities to do in Soft Start.
What is your favorite thing to do during Soft Start?
Drawing. I like to draw monsters, robots, and lots of other unique things.
What was it that you were working? He went on for another minute after. I just ended up having to cut his video a little bit short. But I did have a quote in here that I wanted to go back to and share, just at the end. I probably should have moved it, but. The order of the three Rs is critical. Until a child's regulated, he's unlikely to be able to relate to you. And until a child is related, he's unlikely to have the mental capacity to fully engage with you in the higher-level cognitive processes that are critical for problem-solving, like perspective-taking, predicting the future, and considering multiple solutions. This is not just true for traumatized children, but for all children and all adults, too. So I think if we want our kids to be successful and creative problem solvers, then we have to, we have to allow them time to get their brains regulated so that we can relate to them and get to that reasoning brain.
So you're doing this across the entire school at Haywood?
So, yes. Thank you, Tyler, that was excellent. Tag team. So, yes, this was initially an initiative that was targeted. A lot of you may know about research that suggests one of the great things to deal with students who come to school dysregulated is a CHICO, check-in checkout system. And so for many schools, you will see this as a target event, but you can see from the research, and I like that she left that quote up there, it's not just something that's true for traumatized children, but this is something that would benefit all children. So I had the good fortune to go to conferences this summer, and it really talked more about students coming back from this two years of COVID, how dysregulation is on, was on the rise, and students were super heightened and struggling with managing all the feels, as the kids would say today. And so this was something that we just, this is an initiative school-wide, kindergarten and fifth grade. Everybody starts their day with a soft start, whether you're a gifted kid or a kid with an IEP or anyone in between. This sort of start to the day benefits all kids. And so we didn't want to limit it to just students that had four or five behavior referrals before they could do this sort of Soft Start initiative. It's for everybody.
And have we shared this with any of the other schools?
I shared this with any, anybody who will listen. It's a small sample size, but I will say that we have noticed an increase in student on-task behaviors during the learning time. It starts promptly at nine-ten. Nine oh five, we start announcements. Exactly after the announcements, we jump straight into targeted academics. And we've also noticed a decrease in severe discipline referrals to the office. I'm seeing less kids in the morning. From a negative point of view, I am out visiting. It has really caught on with other teachers. We now have our reading specialist. Because we do a soft start in the morning, they don't start doing targeted title reading classes until nine-ten. So what they do with their morning time, they volunteer to go and reach out to other kids to check in, check with them to start their day. She talked about people using check-in systems that are connected with their regular morning routines of doing weather. So teachers are being creative and say, oh, Tom, are you, are you feeling stormy today? Cloudy today? Sunny today? We've noticed an increase of students reporting themselves as feeling sunny. Some of our teachers are using the zones of regulation communication and informational systems, talking about, are you in a green zone, a blue zone, a red zone? How are you feeling? Are you ready to start your day? So this is all about preparing kids and getting kids ready to be academically engaged at nine-ten. So we're doing it for every kid, and we think it's, would benefit all kids.
Does it also give your teachers a little more insight into some of the students from time to time that may be facing additional challenges that you may not have known about?
I would defer to Mrs. Bunk. From my observation, I would say, yes.
Because I, I have more time to talk to them when they're not, like, it's not, we're not rushing to the next academic thing. They have that time in the morning that I can speak to them. The little girl who had spoken, I mean, she just had a normal, regular argument with her parents about, you know, whether she wanted to pack her lunch. But still, we had a conversation about what happened and how she could deal with that. And so those conversations are taking place, and I think it is helpful for that.
This makes a lot of sense when you think about what the students face a lot of times immediately before they get to school, or just the process of getting to school, right? They've been rushed into a car or into a bus or whatever. Everything's on the fast track, so now all of a sudden you get them to sit down and kind of take a breath.
And it starts with, we didn't delve too much into that, because we've been doing that for years, but it starts with our walk-in talk program. It is not uncommon to see kids walking around the track on great weather days, talking with their friends, interacting. Staff members are out there walking the tracks with them. Oftentimes, if there's an issue going on, we may know about it before they even enter the building. Hey, Mr. Sadler, I was walking around the track, and so-and-so's having a rough day. He may start his day with me, or I may go visit him, or he may start in the classroom with a soft start. So that's an approach we've taken. It's very exciting if the staff has embraced it wholeheartedly, and we are following the research of Dr. Bruce Perry and implementing it in a focused way at our building. We're excited to share this with you and with everyone. Are there any other questions?
Any other questions?
For Tyler?
Very good. Thank you very much for sharing. We appreciate your time.
Thanks, Tyler. Thanks, Mr. Sadler.
All right, you are welcome to stay, but if you want to head out, we're not offended either, so. All right, Board Committees. Levi, do you have anything from the Upper Valley?
Yeah, so Career Center got the report card, just like the Troy City Schools did. They're still on the ABC program versus the Stars program that Mr. Piper talked about later. But some of how they were graded overall, an A. Post-program outcomes, an A. Achievement, they got a B. Career and post-secondary readiness, a B. And graduation, an A. So overall, they're really happy with the results of the report cards over at Career Center. And then also, something that I found out at our last meeting was adult course offerings. Well, I know they have an adult program there. They're offering these new limited programs around forty hours. So it might be one night or two nights a week. They cost around six hundred dollars instead of a full semester-long class. And they're for welding, HVAC, mills, CNC-type training. And it could be for anyone, you know, just who might want to learn some more skills around the house or learn a little bit of welding. You don't have to sign up for a long program like you're going to go into that career in the future, but for six hundred dollars, you get forty hours of training. So there's a lot of new programs starting, I think it's starting in, a lot of them are starting in January. So interesting new programs that they have there for adults.
Thank you. Michael?
Last year's Hater to the Road trips are ended. They were all very successful and had great time in places like New York and South Carolina. They're coming up with new locations for next year. So hopefully next month or shortly thereafter, I'll have some destinations to report where they'll be going.
Sounds like fun. Thank you. All right, next, Mr. Piper, would you like to report on the state report card, if you?
I would love to. And I say that because there's a lot of good things to report. There's a lot of information that's included in the state report card. The information I have up here on the screen is not something you would see just by going to the state website. This is stuff that I've compiled and put together. So I'll try to explain some of this stuff. There's a lot there, and I've shared this with the board. So hopefully this will help explain what you're looking at, because there is a lot of information there. I will refer to something Mr. Fox said, which is that every district has gone to a star rating system as opposed to the previous grading system. So it's up to five stars, and currently districts are ranked in five different areas. So this is just a section of a much larger sheet for all of the different public school districts in Miami and the surrounding counties. And it includes information from not everything, but I think the most pertinent information as far as achievement and some of these ratings. So those first five columns there are the star rating system, achievements stars, progress stars, gap closing, graduation, and early literacy. So achievement is just what it sounds like. How are your kids achieving on these state end-of-course exams and other state tests? Progress is how are your students growing in terms of their, you know, if they're not hitting the bar of achievement, are they getting closer to getting over that bar? Gap closing looks at how you do with all of your different subgroups. So there are economically disadvantaged, there are English-language learners, there are special education students, there are minority students, there are all students. There are several different subgroups that we look at each subgroup that gets, that goes into a part of that rating. There's also a graduation rating for the high school and then an early literacy rating for the elementary buildings that essentially looks at how students are progressing with their reading skills, their literacy skills, that are tied to their reading improvements in monitoring or RIMP plans. So a lot of information there. If there was one single number that we were looking at, the answer to question, how much have students learned? It would be the P.I. score, or performance index score, if it was, and I don't think we should look at one number, but if you were to look at one number, that would be the number. And then you'll see a sample there of what I show in the rest of that spreadsheet. And what we're looking at here, for example, is we have a third-grade language arts proficiency score, and those numbers indicate what percentage of students passed that test. The next column is the ranking, because according to our strategic plan, we look at those fifty-six school districts, and we say, and we ask, where did Troy fall in this ranking? There are fifty-six districts. I just simply sort the scores from highest to lowest and rank the schools how they did. So then you'll see the same thing for third-grade math, fourth-grade language arts, all the way out to the high school and the core exams. So it's a big spreadsheet with a lot of information. Some interesting things you can note if you look at that overall spreadsheet. You can see some geographic trends. You know, schools in certain areas perform well, and we've talked about that before. There's a strong correlation between academic achievements and wealth. So if you were to lay a wealth map of Ohio and put, superimpose an achievement map, they match up very closely. It isn't that wealth causes higher achievement, it just correlates to it. It doesn't mean that a poor student can't achieve, there's just a strong correlation. And you can see that from the chart, from the graphs. So that is, it is our goal, according to our strategic plan, to be in the top ten of school districts or improving by two from year to year. It's difficult to talk about improvement, because for the last couple of years, there have been so many changes with state tests. Last year, we did test, but there were a significant number of students that didn't take the test because of COVID. The year before that, tests were canceled. Tests have changed over time, so recently it's hard to say how we're improving, because there's been so much variation. We're looking to put that variation behind us and get on to much more normal things. So over the coming years, we'll be able to track that progress much better. The top ten or improving by two. Are there any questions about this before I move on? Does that make sense? So I think it's important to take a look at this data in this context, because if you were to look at just how our grade levels, how our district did on each of those state tests, there's only one test out of all those that the district had eighty percent or more of students pass, which is the benchmark to be, to get that indicator. So you'd see a lot of red, that we didn't pass those tests with eighty percent or better. So you'd see a lot of red that we didn't pass those tests with eighty percent or better. But, um, if you look at that overall spreadsheet and you kind of estimate green, meaning you passed it, compared to red, meaning you didn't, you'll notice a lot more red. So it's not just that Troy schools didn't, many, many schools did not pass those tests, and here's a great example. So according to the percentage passing, the hardest test, and it was close because there's some really hard ones, was eighth grade language arts. So there are the top ten school districts in terms of eighth grade language arts proficiency. So you'll see that only four of those districts, out of all fifty-six in our area, only four districts were able to pass that eighth grade language arts test, four. So you could be a top ten school district and still not pass that test with eighty percent. So I think this is really important to keep in mind, not just did the district pass this test, this test, this test, because the answer is no, no, no. But how difficult are these tests, and this is a great illustration of just how hard these tests are. It was about, how long has it been, Dr. Moore, five or six, maybe seven years ago? It's been a while that they changed the tests and they are significantly harder today than they were previously, is that about right?
Yeah, new standards were introduced in two thousand and ten, we implemented in twelve, tests were published shortly thereafter.
So these are significantly difficult tests. Any questions there? This next screen, there's a lot going on here, and this is one of the, this is one of the sheets that I shared with you. Uh, this looks at all of our elementary buildings on the top section. Just so you can kind of take a quick, quick peek and see how different this buildings did compared to one another. Uh, then we have the Van Cleve Building, uh, the junior high and the high school. And there's a little bit more information on this chart than we had previously because we've also included the growth scores on this one. So remember that difference, there's two lenses to look at through for how we're doing. There's achievement and there's growth. Achievement, here's the bar, did you meet it, yes or no, did you pass the test? Growth looks at how much did kids improve, how much, I can't think of a better word, how much did they grow? Even if they did or did not pass that test or reach that bar. If you can think about high jumps or pole vaults for Mr. Fong there, you know, if this is the bar for all kids in eighth grade and kids are trying to jump over that bar and many are not successful, well, how much did we improve our students? How much, how much did we grow them from where they were jumping to where they're jumping now, even if they didn't get over the bar? So that information is also one here for fourth grade reading, fourth grade math, fifth grade reading, and every tested subject area for, uh, all the other higher grade levels. Generally speaking, blue and green are good colors to have there because that means you grew more than average. Um, in terms of growth scores, yellow is still just fine because that means that you grew the average amount. So a lot of really, really good information, uh, for growth scores here. And here is our district summary screen all put together in one. This has all of our tested subject areas for all of our grades and our percentage proficient, our ranking and our value-added scores or growth. So this is the entire district snapshot, all combined, all third grade, all fourth grade, reading math, and so on. So you can see from that, um, second column there that we only had one tested subject area, which was biology, where eighty percent or more of our students passed. The middle column is our ranking and that right column is our value added. Again, referring back to those colors I talked about, blue is fantastic, green is really, really good. Yellow is just fine and orange and red are not as good. There's a lot of great information on that right column and that's where our district really excelled on the report card. We are really growing our kids. In fact, to kind of illustrate that a little better, Dr. Moore has something we can kind of show you. Come on, come up here with me, Dr. Moore. You want to go over there and I'll take the other end? Will you walk that way?
I'll walk that way.
Careful here. So this is a list. There are six hundred and ten public schools in Ohio, and this is a list of all six hundred and ten public schools in Ohio. And they're ranked from highest growth to lowest growth, all six hundred and ten districts are ranked. And that little yellow line you see way up there towards the top, that's where Troy City Schools falls in that list of six hundred and ten.
And that's based on the growth of the district as a whole?
Yes, all of our students, all of our grade levels, that right column over there. How did all of our kids grow in all those different tested subject areas? And Dr. Moore, I mean, I think we're in some pretty good company up there, who were some of those districts? Because those are some pretty high achieving, high growth districts there.
Hilliard City, Looking Heights, Solon Tangi, Centerville, Upper Arlington, Bexley. Solon, Dublin, Rocky River, Sycamore. So those are just some, there's some others as well.
Yeah, those are typically some of the highest achieving, the highest growth schools in the state, and we are right up there, higher than some of those. So I think this is quite an accomplishment and something we should be very proud of our staff for accomplishing. Uh, we're a pretty rare, uh, company up there. It's gonna seem like it's gonna take forever, but I'll take care of it. You, Mr. Fong, can handle that? Thank you. So a couple of quick summary points here to bring that to a close, so how did we do overall? Again, there's a lot of information in that report card, I'm happy to answer questions, but here are some of the key points. On the star rating system, our district got twenty-one out of twenty-five stars. And that puts us in the top fifteen percent of districts in the state of Ohio. Uh, that was according to some analysis the Cleveland Plain Dealer did for Cleveland. So top fifteen percent for the star rating system. Again, according to that chart there, we have the nineteenth highest growth score in the state of Ohio out of six hundred and ten districts. And Troy High School was third out of three thousand and ninety-six. So there are three thousand and ninety-six school buildings in Ohio that get a growth score. Elementarys, middle, junior high, high schools, three thousand and ninety-six buildings. Troy High School had the third highest in the state. You notice that biology, we achieved that indicator, that was our only indicator. But geometry, going back to again how difficult these tests are, when I first saw our scores, I was kind of disillusioned with how low some of them looked. Geometry is an example of that, I saw our geometry score and I thought, oh my gosh, only sixty-seven point six percent of kids passed that test. But that score is the first score that we've had that's in the top ten in our comparison group. So that sixty-seven point six percent is extremely high comparatively. And again, that's why that comparison is so important, because if you look at it alone, sixty-seven point six, that's terrible. No, no, it's actually quite good. So there's a lot to celebrate, that last point is a big one to celebrate, our geometry teachers, I think, were disillusioned by the percentage too.
They were.
But when they saw the ranking, they feel much better, as they should. So. Questions, comments?
So that's significant progress and what do you attribute that to?
Dr. Moore, you want to weigh in and then Mr. Mr. Billbone and Mr. Sadler, you guys want to take a shot at that one, what do we attribute that to?
I'll begin with what I think, I certainly would like our two principals to share what they think as well. The, we've got a great team of teachers working around with us, it's, uh, it's pretty awesome, we come to work every day, I know we got people out there that care about kids. And also, though, they want kids to achieve well and grow academically. That's one thing, I also think we made a concentrated effort to try to narrow our focus on teaching techniques, techniques, methods, put our professionals in a good spot to utilize good tools and really focus on standard achievement. And I would tie that back into, before I let the other guys talk, I could do this all day, by the way, but as as Tyler said, or Mrs. Mrs. Bunk said, we have teachers that are working with our kids where they are. We talked one of the last two times we met about where the start line is for some kids versus others. And recognizing that and how the school day starts for them was one example here of trying to develop activities that can enable kids to also be in a spot where they can be successful, and that occurs K through twelve, nice things like that. That's, that's what I think, Mr. Piper, but I'd love to hear from Maurice and Dave on that, whoever wants to go.
Go ahead. Oh, Dave pointed me. So I would concur with everything that Dr. Moore said, but I would also add one other caveat. Uh, last year, we, as a district, uh, really started with the district leadership team initiative where as a group, uh, we were all looking at data collectively together and making, um, recommendations. It would not be uncommon for the high schools to learn something from the elementary, elementary to learn something from the high school. And we did those meetings on a monthly basis, and I think that sort of collaborative, um, approach also helped to drive some of this district.
And while we're piggybacking off of each other, um, so the there's the district leadership team, uh, building leadership teams and then teacher-based teams, and last year was the first year at the high school, that during the school day, uh, we had teacher-based teams that would meet. And so I've had several schools reach out to me and say, hey, how did you get that number, or how did you have that amount of growth? And really, it's, it's the right teachers doing the right things, um, it's short-cycle assessments, it's them looking and analyzing at questions that our students are answering around standards, um, and and then doing that during the school day, having that time built into their day to collaborate. And so meeting with teachers, you know, talking with them, a couple of them, you know, expressed obviously a lot of joy about this and and that really has helped spark, um, some additional fire for our TBTs. We have nineteen different, um, areas right now meeting during the school day at some point each month. So from algebra to geometry to biology to, math has a separate TBT just for decimals. It's a, a tool that our math teachers are using, where they get together and they talk about what are the most effective ways to use that tool to help our students grow and learn, and it's, it's just fun to watch them do good work and then perceive these kind of results.
Bethany, you're in the classroom, you want to add anything?
I think that something that I see, at least I'm at Van Cleve if you guys don't know. And something that I see that is really beneficial for the kids, and this is kind of piggybacking off of what Mrs. Bunk said, just letting them feel cared for, like they, they come to class every day and they're excited to learn and they know that their teachers care for them. So I think that that also helps them to feel like school's their safe spot.
I, I think these guys presented it exactly right, it is, we have a great staff first and foremost. Giving our staff the right tools, giving them the time and the focus to work together, um, around common information and just simply to talk about what's working. Having teachers come together, talk about how their students are doing, what's working, and just learning from each other. There's no better professional development that we can do, and that's a focus of our daily work, it's not about professional days like today, but it's about every day, creating time and space for them to do that and focus for it, so that's the secret formula.
Makes sense. Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a question on, on the growth, is that based on same students versus their prior year? Like they were in second grade last year, they're in third grade, or is it the same grade level versus that grade level last year and it's a different set of students?
It looks at how those students performed in the past versus how they scored this time around. So it, it looks at, if they're in sixth grade, for example, how did they do on the fifth grade reading test? And then how did they do on the sixth grade reading test? But it's not just that, it is then also, how typically do students like them do on those two tests? So it's kind of like when you take your child to the doctor, your infant, and they give it, they weigh it and they measure it and they tell you, here's the chart and here's how tall your son will be when he's eighteen, because they collect that data over time and compare it to kids like them. So it's not comparing, you know, gifted kids with with kids with a learning, um, disability. It's kids like them, how they typically performed over time. Thanks.
All right, thank you, and I guess you're up again for the district communication plan.
Well, um, I shared the, the communication plan, I think, was something the board kind of, um, wanted to see this year, so we put that together, brought components of our strategic plan, um, added a list of things that we do. And then kind of, the next step for us was we took that to our district advisory team and we kind of just had a conversation with them. And it was a great conversation. There's a lot of things we do, and that's that chart on the back of the page, um, to communicate from the classroom level all the way up to the district level, uh, like for a snow day. There's a lot of communication that happens, so we tried to capture the things we do. And then a lot of our conversation with the district advisory team was focused on that two-way communication, how can we get more input from people? We've done coffee chats, we've done Facebook Live, and that group was a fantastic group. Kathy was there, great conversation from that group. Great suggestions from that group, and I thought just rather than trying to figure out what people want, ask the people what they want. So they had some great insight, um, one of the things I mentioned was being where people are rather than trying to invite them to something different, which that sounds really smart and why did we not think of that before? They, they had some great insight, using videos and shorter clips, someone mentioned like TikTok videos, putting questions out there for people to consider or or topics for people to ask questions about, providing a link or something, and then collecting those questions and then presenting a video that helps answer the questions. Rather than trying to bring everybody together in a certain place at a certain time, so just a great group. We've also talked, as part of our strategic plan, to put together a district survey uh, because there's really no way to know how our communication is working for people, other than to talk with them, which is good data, but it's a pretty small sample size. Um, another way would be to survey people, and that's part of our strategic plan that we haven't gotten to yet. So the next step, I think, would be to take that communication plan with feedback from the board, make that a little clearer to do this plan, to put this plan into action, and at the end of this year, survey our people and say, do you feel like you're being communicated with? Do you feel like you have information? Do you feel like you have avenues to ask questions and opportunities for that when, when you need to? So that's where we are, I know Mrs. Borch just provided some input. I'm not sure if that was representative of the whole board or if other people had suggestions or questions, but I'm happy to take that and then put it together and and make some changes to the plan if there weren't to, so.
I know that one comment, I don't know how the other board members feel, one comment I had had is, you know, and I didn't realize was a perspective that you felt like this was for an internal plan for us to work on. And I kind of had the assumption it would also be a plan that our community could go to, so they could kind of go, where can I find the information I need? Because we have a boatload of information in many places, but oftentimes, it's really hard to find. And we are working to redesign our website, so hopefully make it easier for people to find it. But even, even knowing our social media links or who to contact for what, or I don't know, just some things kind of, uh, I guess I see it as we have this, all this information, is there a way that, I'm a new parent or somewhere that I can go and say, I just don't know where to find this, and I know you can't get too granular, but some way to have kind of a one-stop shop for them to go to just get some basic information so that maybe they can bring a child from there and find what they need. I don't know, maybe it's something you can talk to your committee about again as well.
I think it was important where you noted that, like, some teachers use Dojo, some use Remind, and that's at the teacher's choice. So that is can be confusing for a new parent as well. Like, oh, this, my friend said that they get anything through Dojo, oh, I've never seen anything through Dojo or.
I think it's probably, especially now that we have Canvas, um, and Power School trying to to direct our people back to those tools that are common, so that, so to your point, parents aren't trying to figure out, it's this Remind for this class and it's Dojo for this class and something different. A little more uniformity across the district, I think, would be worth.
Of course, if you have multiple students with multiple teachers, it gets very confusing very fast.
Yes.
Mr. Piper, if I could ask you a question, I've had several people in the community tell me that they don't use Facebook, oddly enough, they don't use any type of social media, but they would like to hear more from the school. So are you going to continue with your mailings and 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 things of that nature?
It's a good question, um, we continue to push things out through press releases, like we had one today for our professional development day. So we'll continue to use traditional media. We are trying to grow our YouTube viewership, um, I don't know if that's social media. I think according to the statistics, I've seen the vast majority of people do use social media. I'm one that doesn't too, so it's not all people. It is challenging to get to those people, um, we do use our school messenger system, but that, that works very well, but it only works for for parents and staff members. It's a challenge to reach that other population. Mailings are a challenge because due to some recently released guidance from the auditor's office, we're not allowed to select a group of people, for example, like voters. We can't select a group of voters to mail things to, we have to mail it to everyone or no one, so.
Every, sorry, that's in your opinion, everyone where like in our, in our district.
I'd say if you're using school fonts.
Let's see if you're using school funds. Or is that...
Yes, if you're using school funds, yes. If you're using district funds, it has to either go to no one or everyone.
The entire population, in every household in Troy.
In the Troy City schools.
It's expensive.
We were sending out about, we were sending out newsletters by mail, about seven thousand, which is less than a third of Troy's population, was about six to seven thousand dollars per newsletter. In terms of printing and so take that and triple it, and you're looking at twenty grand to send out a newsletter to every single person.
So it is, I think, cost prohibitive to send printed newsletters to all residents of the district. It would be a significant sum.
We still did one and we sent it out via social media and it's available on our website and we push it out on our website, but...
I like the idea of a press release. Especially since you've got to define author as a communication director.
And we do those semi-regularly, yeah. And we'll continue to do that. But you're right, that, it's hard to reach all people where they are, but we'll continue to try. Are there other, is there any feedback or advice or questions you'd like me to consider when finalizing this?
I'll take some more time on net. I didn't get to go through it. I was driving back thirteen hours on Saturday.
Don't read and drive.
Then a day. So I haven't had a chance to go through it, but if I, next little days, I'll provide any thoughts. Thanks.
Sure. Whenever you have time, just shoot in your thoughts.
When is your next meeting with me?
We meet bimonthly. The last one was November third, sometime early in November.
So is your plan, does, do you want this finalized by November third?
I think that would be fine.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah. If the board's okay with that.
And they would be a good, perfect place to review and make sure everything's there, so, yes. All right, anything else for that?
Before you get off all that, I'd like to express my appreciation to staff and administrators that are in attendance this evening for the job well done. So I think, you know...
Pretty impressive results.
You know, I've always said our staff is second to none and they certainly exhibited that to be true tonight.
Yep.
It was a grueling last couple of years. I mean, I guess what they had was great, but then if you considered that on top of it, it's like blows my mind, kind of.
I'm really excited for them. They've been working very hard, to your point. It's been a tough couple of years.
Yeah.
It's really exciting to see that us coming together as teams and talking to each other about what we do.
I'm pretty excited to see what comes out for this next year. Because each, success breeds success. I mean, that's the catch-all phrase, but I think there's a lot of truth to that.
And what you see, and I've seen this in many places, is when you have continued growth and progress like that, achievement will follow. As our kids catch up and our kids keep growing, those achievement scores are going to start going up too. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Sadler, Mr. Dillbaum, everyone out here.
Yeah.
Appreciate everything you do.
Pretty spectacular. It was great, it was really fun sharing all that. Okay, we have the first hearing of the public for any item that is on the agenda. If not, we will move forward to the treasurer's report. Our first item is the consideration for the approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting from September twelfth. Okay, we'll do so, Mr. Fox first and Mr. Ham second. Questions, comments? If not, Mr. Price, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mrs. Porchers?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the financial report to review the SM2, monthly total revenue expenditures, et cetera, et cetera, in exhibit B.
Ma'am?
Thank you, Mrs. Packard. Thank you, Mr. Trussell. Write it up here. Mr. Price, do you have any comments?
Finished up the first quarter of the fiscal year. We are tracking reasonably well according to our spending plan that was put in place. Hopefully that continues. Benefits are running very well so far, knock on wood. And obviously with recent weather, we've had more of that, well, than that last, so... See a slight decline in fuel costs at the start of the school year, but it's starting to take up a little bit.
Yes.
On how we attended the last school year. So hopefully that comes back down as we move forward.
I think our teachers would agree too with the weather that we've had, it's often so blasted hot.
Kind of dodged a bullet this year, damn.
I know. All right, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Porchers?
Yes. Next, we have the then and now to, for those items that require certification of funds, as fiscal officer was not obtained before the contract or order involving the expenditure of money was made. May I have a motion, please?
Tell a move.
Thank you, Mr. Ham.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
What is the one Detroit Country Club?
That's when you were out there playing golf.
Oh, was that it?
It's cost for our high school golf team.
Oh, okay.
You didn't remember that?
I didn't remember that, okay.
They split their time between Miami Shores and the Country Club.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Price? If not, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mrs. Porchers?
Yes. Next, we'll move on to the...
One more, quick update. Going with the junior high, we are still waiting on three units. We made the decision a week ago to reinstall three old units along with the one new unit that had been delivered. So we would have heat if the weather cools down severely. Because the rental units that we had to exchange the air were not capable of heating the classroom block. Those were lifted and placed on Saturday. Rest of the utilities were, vendors were there to hook them up today. And I believe they are all three operational as we sit here tonight, so.
Is there a date on what you're...
Moving forward, we have been given no further information. Those three units are still sitting in Mexico waiting on control boxes.
So do we wait, say they would get here next month, do you wait till the spring to do that?
No, we, we haven't discussed it with all the parties involved, but we would probably be looking at Thanksgiving or Christmas. They cannot lift off units or lift on units while we are occupied.
Okay, so you gotta do it on a break?
Just in case.
And say it comes in, is the weather a factor if it comes in January, February?
I talked to the main contractor today about that and didn't feel it would be an issue.
Just need a break.
Yes, we just need a few, a few days.
Okay.
In order to do that.
And that's at our cost?
That...
This reinstall the whole one?
No, because that, we've already basically paid for the install of new units. It's just removing three old units, lifting them off.
Yeah, the reinstall of the old units, though, that...
Yes, that, yes. Yes, we did.
Yep. And what about the rental? Do you have that, those numbers for like the reinstall cost and the rental cost, what that came in at?
Not complete rental cost, the reinstall cost was about twenty-six thousand dollars.
Okay, thanks.
Majority of that was the crane rental on the weekend.
Any other questions? Anything else, Mr. Price?
Nope, that's it.
All right, we'll move on to the superintendent's report, resolution to accept gifts to the Troy City School District. And a thank you from the Board of Education.
Tell a move.
Thank you, Mr. Ham. Thank you, Mr. Trussell, Mr. Piper.
Pretty long list this month. Quite a bit of material donated, including gift cards and those kinds of things, coupons, which are always nice for students to get for rewards. And some significant monetary donations too, mostly to our music program. But again, it's a great illustration of how fortunate we are to live in such a supportive community. They are extremely generous for our students, our staff, and our programs. Our monthly total this month, twenty thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. And our fiscal year to date, fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and thirteen cents. And again, we don't add the value of those other things. This is just the money that has been made. So very impressive and lucrative month for our kids and staff.
Very much, just thank you, Troy community. Any questions from anyone? Mr. Price, can you call the roll?
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mrs. Porchers?
Yes.
Next, we have the American Education Week proclamation, November fourteenth through the eighteenth. Sponsored by the United States Department of Education and twelve other organizations. So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Packard.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Trussell.
I think they deserve more than a week. It's an annual thing. It's a good chance to remember to celebrate the good work that our staff, certified, classified, everyone does. And we appreciate them very much.
I agree. Any questions, comments? Mr. Price, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mrs. Porchers?
Yes.
Next, we have the approval for reimbursement in lieu of transportation for the folks listed below.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Trussell.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Piper?
So as you're aware, we are required to transport students who live in our district but choose to go to other charter or private schools within a thirty-minute radius of our district. There are some instances where that's impractical for us to do, for whatever reason, many reasons. So in those instances, we're able to offer those parents payment in lieu of transportation. And this is a list of those who've accepted that.
And this has been a pass through of funds that we get from the state for transportation.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Will you call the roll, please, Mr. Price?
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mrs. Porchers?
Yes.
Next, we have the approval for the boys' basketball overnight trip to Mount Vernon, Ohio.
Tell a move.
Thank you, Mr. Ham and Mrs. Packard. Comments, Mr. Price or Mr. Piper?
There's a questionnaire there, I think you have, it's been filled out. I don't think they took the trip last year, do you not believe they did?
I don't believe they went through this one, Adam.
But pretty routine request and all the information is there, so I would recommend we approve it. Anything you want to add?
I recommend it.
Any questions? No? Can you call the roll, please, Mr. Price?
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mrs. Porchers?
Yes.
Next, we have the resolution for the employment of substitute teachers per the code noted below.
Tell a move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ham, thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Price?
So there continues to be a real challenge for schools across the country and the state and here in Troy to get substitute teachers. It's getting worse every year. For the last few years now, the Ohio Legislature has passed a resolution allowing us to hire subs that don't have a bachelor's degree. This is that again, they have reauthorized that this year. This doesn't mean that we'll have just anyone be a substitute teacher. They still have to, you know, be qualified and have a license to substitute, but it does allow us to kind of expand our pool. Mark, you want to add anything to that?
So yeah, this happened last year was the first, and it allows school districts to set the parameters that they want in non-degree people to substitute. What we've gone with is someone who's got a number of years working as a classroom aide. We would allow, or someone who's currently in school to become a teacher. We've allowed, so we've had some student teachers also become substitutes and work that way. We've had a couple aides that may be retired and done that. So what this does is they renewed that this year for a two-year span. So this is, we have to reauthorize it as the board does for the next two years, so that's what this is about. And we're going to follow the same protocol if somebody's been an aide for a number of years or currently in school to become a teacher, then we'll allow that to happen.
Sounds good. Are there any questions? If not, Mr. Price, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mrs. Porchers?
Yes.
Next, we have a motion for the personnel items referenced in exhibit B.
Tell a move.
Thank you, Mr. Ham.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Trussell. Mr. Barhorse?
I just want to call a couple of things out. Three things. The first one is Kimberly Boyd's retiring. She's an aide at Van Cleve, she's going to retire at the end of December, January first. She'll pop an extra bottle of champagne or something, I don't know. But I think this is sixteen years for her here in Troy, so I want to wish her well. She's an aide at Van Cleve, she also works as a bus aide in the afternoon, she rides a bus.
Did you say six zero?
Sixteen, one bus.
Sixteen, okay. Popped up, yeah.
Also Sarah Fiss, Cara Ely, and Julia Randall, they've put in for leave, they're having babies. My, Mr. Moore likes to say it's good for business. It's kind of rough finding long-term subs, but that's just good for business. And then finally, we have a couple under classified, Area Three, classified, there's two bus drivers in there, if you noticed. So we're having a little bit of luck there, we can always use more.
Does anybody have questions for Mr. Barhorse? No, Mr. Price, will you call the roll?
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Porchers?
Yes.
Next, we have the second hearing of the public for any items that's not on the agenda. I think we have one. This is Davis, Ms. Davis.
Of course.
Apologize.
Well, I know I have three minutes and I'm timing this, I'm going to be as brief as possible and I want to keep this as factual as brief as possible, okay? Because I want to get through just half a click items. First of all, none of this is intended to be a direct attack on administration or the board, period. These are things that have been brought, obviously, to my attention and everyone is talking about. So I just want to propose them and I just want factual answers, okay? Because people ask me a lot of questions and I don't have answers for them. I don't know why I get asked these questions, but I do. So anybody who knows me knows I'm a pretty honest person. Secondly, you know, I've been to a couple of meetings, so I know how hard you're working on striving and improving. And I can tell over time, following social media, how the communication has improved dramatically. I can tell I'm liking it. I can see that there are many more positive things coming out that I've never seen in the past, that I've never seen, I've never posted. I've not posted, but I've never seen. So I will say, based on being at the last couple of meetings, what you're trying to do, I can see as apparent. I, I'm following, so congratulations on that and your numbers. And Mr. Sadler's here and I'm super excited, I've always raved about him anyways, I wouldn't get that little nudge in.
That's why he stayed here?
Yeah, I'm sure it was just me.
I knew when I would have left.
I know you don't like that. First thing on the agenda, this may be some fussy question, but I've gotten this question over and over. I, are there three boxes anywhere at the end of the buildings? Do we all know what those are?
So I see you have a number of questions here, and I'm not sure we're immediately equipped to spew out answers. I think that would be really unfair for administration without having that. So you are welcome to ask the questions, but what I would encourage is that you hook up with Mr. Piper and have that conversation, allow him to... Uh, you are welcome to ask the questions, but what I would encourage is that you hook up with Mr. Piper and have that conversation, allow him to gather that information for you.
Okay.
I mean, that would just be, I'm fairly certain none of us can more than likely answer your questions, and I think that would be the most.
We could probably answer that one. It's a flat no.
Is that a flat no?
Yeah.
It's amazing how often I get asked that because there are the kids running around with cats and doing all that, and I'm like, I have an answer for you.
I had to look it up to find out what they were even talking about.
I think it's an urban myth, honestly.
Perfect, thank you. I, I was going with that, but I'm like, I don't wanna tell people no.
Yeah.
And.
I am not aware of those existing in any school, anywhere.
Well, I, I've heard of some.
There are some in any other schools.
West counties from here.
Okay, next question.
But I've heard, yeah, I've been asked that same one, so.
Um, this has been confirmed and I just wanna know, like, going forward. The homecoming dance, kids had a great time. Um, I did have a few students comment to me. It was a little appalling to me that in the dance, in the corner, there were people making out excessively, like of the same gender. It was not managed. And I just wanted to know in the future if that was going to be addressed. Cause when I asked my daughter the first, I said, how was the dance? And that was her first comment, that two males did not even come up for air. Again, probably some of them.
We will get, we will get an appropriate response.
Yeah, I think Mr. Price were getting to some investigation there. I don't, obviously we weren't there, so.
Yes, very deep questions. So that was kind of very sickening for me to hear as a parent, when I got explaining that and.
So.
Again, I'm not bashing anybody.
No, it's fine. Um, so what I can do is I can take the questions that you have and I appreciate you putting them down in writing. And I'll touch base with our principal because one pertains to the high school, one pertains to the junior high. I'll talk, I think I know the answers.
Okay.
But I'll talk with them and then can I give you a call? Is that okay?
Yeah, you sure can. If you wanna finish the rest of these out, if you wanna talk one-on-one, that is fine. Again, I'm not here to bat. I just, I just want answers because people are asking me these questions and I wanna be fair.
Yeah, and I would encourage.
And not mislead. And I'm not one to go on Facebook and start bashing. That's not my thing. I'll sit in the meeting.
Sure. And I would encourage you to, um, don't feel like you have to wait for a board meeting. If you have a question, just call, um, call the appropriate building, call central office. And if folks are asking you questions, that's great, but feel free also to direct them to us. We like it when the phone rings. We like it when people ask these questions because that helps us get accurate information out there, like your first question, so, yeah.
Yeah, and there are printouts of the last that are actually in writing that I'm very concerned about as well, so that is very factual about the pronouns. And if that's being pushed in the junior high and it's, it's right there. And I don't know if that's something you have to teach or how it has to be presented, or if that is a case-by-case with teachers. Like each teacher is doing that or they can choose how they present that. Does that make sense?
Let me touch base with our principal and see if he knows anything about that.
Yes, okay.
Can you, some of these questions might be from more than, coming just more from Ms. Davis, like three, one, three and four, like people have asked me, so those questions as well.
I can copy the board.
Yeah, I'd love to hear the response on, on some of those as well. I haven't heard.
So is email okay if I just follow up an email?
Yeah, you can definitely do that. Again, and, and he, Levi, I'm right on, this is, these are not my personal, like, oh, I'm putting these together. These are things that people ask me over and over and I don't have answers for them, and I would like to have the answers.
So you wanna write down your email and address, yeah?
And I, I'm with Mr. Piper in saying that, you know, I would hope that these individuals, I mean, that's the kind of stuff that gets out on social media and just swirls and swirls and swirls and swirls. And if people would just reach out to the administration and, you know, I mean, I think any board member would help you find the appropriate administrator if you need help with that, or you can go directly to Mr. Piper. So we are here to help you. I'm not sure we can give the accurate answers at all times, but, you know, it's certainly better to nip it in the bud and get the answer rather than having that question go around at all times.
Sure.
Well, you guys talk about, I just know over and over about marketing yourselves better, and again, I think that's being done, but when there are still comments out there like this, it's, it's, it's very negative feedback.
Unfortunately, that's the world we all live in today, right? That social media, any one person can make a comment and all of a sudden it takes on a life of its own and somebody else believes it and passes it on and so.
But that's the other thing. I mean, the communication plan is like a, that's our number one initiative this year, is to really make sure we have avenues of communication outbound and inbound. I mean, that's why we created the District Advisory Committee to help us understand, how do we do a better job of communicating and receiving feedback? I mean, we really are working on that, so, you know, we also appreciate if you have conversations with our administration, your thoughts on that too. I mean, because we are trying to be there and address issues or make sure that people are getting educated as decisions are made and as we move forward with different initiatives, so. So we appreciate your time.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Sorry, Derek.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, thank for providing these screenshot examples because people have mentioned different things that are being taught or their kids see to me, and I say, do you have examples? Or they say, well, I've heard it from somebody, so-and-so's kid said this and that, and, you know, then there's no way that anyone, you know, in administration can go back and, and look and find it and see if it's happening or not, but if, if you have screenshots like you provided here, I think that's, that's great to, uh, you know, help track down the answers.
Okay.
Thank you for caring enough that you bring it up to us. We appreciate it. We really.
Yes. Well, my daughter's a freshman, so I'm weighing options of all schools and her best option is to stay. She's, she's here, she's liking it right now.
Good.
We intend to keep it that way, right?
It's always, it's always the goal.
So I mean, listen, these are screenshots from what?
They are from assignments from junior high kids. And I guess my general question is, is that an overall curriculum? Obviously I'm not a teacher. Is that something that has, has to be pushed for the state? Or is this a teacher case-by-case that are, there's a particular teacher pushing this? Cause if that's the case, then I wanna know from my daughter in the future if I need to handpick teachers.
Well, let me first dig into the what before you hit the why.
Okay.
And I'll get back to you.
Alright.
Alright. If that's the case, I think.
Anybody else have anything?
Does anybody else have anything? And Mr. Piper, Mr. Price, anything else on here?
I'll add that we had a professional development today, day today, um, active shooter training, which is something that you don't really wanna think about, but have to think about. We had all of our staff members involved in that. Um, really appreciate Troy PD, uh, for being here today. They are extremely professional, uh, they're very helpful. Communicate with the teachers very clearly about how they did and what they should do. I appreciate Dr. Moore put in a lot of work for today. A lot of conversations happened in buildings. They did a debrief by building with staff. I know Dave talked, uh, to his staff for a long time after that. Maurice, same thing, so. Just really appreciate the staff being there today, being very professional. It's something that none of us wanna think about. It's a hard day. Today was a hard day for that reason, um, but I thought they did a great job, so.
Do you find that you have to kind of debrief them a little bit, bring them back down after going through something like that?
So it was, it was good for us to get back together and, I mean, with it happening at the high school, obviously, there were some very specific things that we learned about some doors and some, you know, pieces that I think every time you do something like that, you learn a little something new, but I, I caught myself in the moment, uh, too deep in the weeds on the details. I, I did, I, I paused and I just said, how's everybody doing? How, how are you doing? And I know that I went through several different scenarios in different places in the building. From not active in the office because they wanted some of us in the office, to more of an observer role, to a very active role that I didn't really intend to, to have. It's just the way that it unfolded, so. Yeah, everybody seemed to be okay. And I know that was a part of the time, when we went through this last time, there was a range of emotions, and I think you go through a day like that and it can be very challenging. But it was good. Good to sit and talk afterwards, definitely.
Mr. Sadler, anything else?
I, I would agree. It was very beneficial to debrief after the fact.
Yeah.
Bethany?
I think it was great too, and it was really nice because Troy PD stayed after too, and they debriefed with us, so they were able to give us pointers on things that we did well and things that, that we, even from the last time that we did this, just differences that they saw and how the staff handled it, and it was just really, it was really eye-opening. It's a hard day, but it's eye-opening.
It is a hard day. Alright, there's no other comments or questions. We have a motion for adjournment. So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Packard and Mr. Fox. Mr. Price?
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yeah.
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mrs. Porchers?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time. I'm glad that you attended.